Good morning, it's nine o'clock, we're in Lion County Board of County Commissioners, Friday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Special meeting, disposal, discussion. Today's agenda, action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted, no action to be taken on.
No action will be taken on any item. Unless it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration, items may be pulled or moved from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments paid by the general public. Any such restriction must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of Commissioners, special meeting, all or some Board of Commission members may elect to call in to this meeting. The public can access this meeting at the above address. Which of course is on the agenda. Roll call today, we have Commissioner Jacobson on Zoom. And the other four commissioners are in chambers. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, please follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Participation. No action be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It's anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. This will be public comment on anything other than what's on the agenda today. For possible action, item four, review and adoption of agenda. Commissioners, any input you'd like on the agenda? Okay, we, oh, go ahead, County Manager.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to request that we move, we move six B before six A. It's kind of a mistake on the agenda anyway.
Okay, so we are going to move six B. To the beginning of the other, on item six, and go six B and then six A. Any other additional changes? Anything from the public on this changes? Okay, I'll look for a motion on the agenda with the change.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda with the mentioned change by the County Manager.
All those in favor?
Good second.
Oh, I'm sorry, second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have a five zero on the agenda. Let's move on down to for possible action, clerk treasurer, approve to canvas the vote from November fifth, twenty twenty four, general election per NRS two ninety three point three eight seven.
Good morning, Stacy Limburg, Lion County Frick Treasurer. Um, I'd like to start by saying this, my first general election and it was less of a learning curve and more of a tsunami, so I learned so much. Um, but man, the team really came together, I mean, we had a little. A few issues that we worked out, uh, with the staff and the state and just some things, I think that, uh, they tell me it happens almost in every election, so we were pretty blessed to get through it. Um, I'd like to start by thanking, um, the administration, I mean, Andrew, Josh, everyone checking in, do you need anything? Facilities, um, the sheriff, the sheriff actually brought us pizza on election day, so that was pretty cool. Um, and the VIPs, um, actually, we had a deputy in Dayton, we had no issues, we had, um. Observers at every state, at every location, we had seven, um, or six polling places. We wound up with sixty nine poll workers, we used, uh, uh. Probably a hundred and thirty four, uh, ICX, which is the election, um. Check-in machines, and we used fifty five pull pads, so we didn't have any issues other than a small line in Fernley. Um, on election day, uh, less than an hour wait, but they, they really turned out in numbers this time, so we had a huge turnout and a really good time, so. Um, I think everyone did really well, we were all home by midnight and we got our numbers recorded and I think it went really well, so, um. You guys have the, the full. Um, abstract there for all the votes and everything, so I'll just go through some of the things that I'm required to disclose. So, um, we rolled over to the new system, so we had all new software, um, as well as new employees to run this election. Um, that was effective on August eighth. And I have to tell you, I think the collaboration between the counties and the state was amazing, the state really, really did support us and provide support and training with this new system. It actually worked pretty flawless throughout the election, uh, my biggest complaint on it is the reporting and getting information out of it. Um, they were focused so much on, on making sure it worked for the election that they, the reports and things like that, which could be some learning curve for me as well, but I did have problems. Getting information out quickly to people asking questions, which I didn't like, but we're working on that for next time. Um, we had, uh, overall, um, we only had three, we had, we didn't get three complaints. Um, during the election, uh, one was for a sticker on someone's water bottle, which we immediately took care of. Um, one was a jail complaint, there was a, um, Lion County resident. In a Churchill County jail, and I had no resources or way to get him a ballot. So, um, I told them that, I said, I, I can't do that, so they did report that to the state. I've talked to the state about it, told them the, the process and I just, I just couldn't make it happen. Um, so they understood that and we're going to work on doing some more processes or looking at that legislation on how better to, to process jail votes. Um, the other one was, um, we were, uh, had a complaint from the tribe, um, that we were turning away voters. Um, the one complaint resulted from a voter that didn't have any ID or an address, so we were unable to register him. So all three of them were addressed, um, we had two small threats that were, didn't affect our, our election at all, we moved on. When, we had one complaint from a poll worker to a written letter to the state. That she felt the, uh, time spent by our poll workers at, uh, the, one of the tribal locations, it didn't warrant the. The amount of ballots didn't warrant the cost to have it there, but it is statute that we, we do provide them those poll locations, so. Um, the state, when I talked to them about it and we reviewed that letter, we're going to work more and maybe the state staff it versus our poll workers to help. Move some of that cost to, to meet the needs. Um, we had, uh, one, uh, primary ballot come in. Um, it was a primary ballot in a general. Envelope, so I'm not, we're not sure how that happened, but that ballot was rejected. Um, we received one Washoe County ballot in a Lion County general ballot envelope, we had to reject that one. Um, we did have one non-citizen voter reported, which was canceled in our system as soon as it was reported to us. It was found to be an error on DMV's part, um, the, the person did disclose that he was not a resident. And it just made it through the system, which the state agreed to do some more work with DMV and training, um, to make sure. That, prevent that from happening in the future. We had, uh, two duplicate votes, so, uh, they, the person came, voted in person, then the mail, the ballot was mailed to us, so we rejected the mail-in and we accepted the in-person voting. Um, we did reject seventy nine of the provisional ballots, uh, that we did receive and mainly it was ID or lack of ID or proof of residence in our county. Um, we had fifty three ballots received from prior elections, which is a big concern of mine and I'm on my, on the, the. I guess my horse to try to get, work closer with USPS, because we had a lot of reports of people receiving duplicate ballots. And they were actually from prior elections, so we've had three reports of people receiving their ballots from the PPP, the primary and the general, all in the same day. Don't know how that happens, but I have all the proof and I am reporting it and I have a contact, uh, with the district manager of USPS, that's working very close with me. And I actually, there's a lot of citizens that are reporting these receipts to me, so we can continue on cleaning up that process. The other thing that I didn't like is that the USPS, most of the cutoffs, um, for their pickups on election day are between three forty-five and five. While the election goes till seven, so all of those ballots dropped off after their cutoff times are postmarked the following day and are not allowed to be counted. That is a big concern of mine and I think I've relayed that to the state and I hope. Next year, uh, I guess in the next general, I'm going to go ahead and disclose that to our voters and our sample ballot in hopes of getting some education out there, not to drop those ballots off. Um, because I'm thinking, you know, you get off work at five, drop by, okay, it's election day, I get to drop my ballot and those ballots are not being counted, so that was, that was one of my concerns. Um. We did have a hundred and sixty nine uncurved signatures, so we were not allowed to count those votes. We had two, uh, precincting issues that we are going to be correcting in the next year. Um, one affected the, the GID in Stagecoach. And due to the timeframe and the rollover just in August, we were really pushed for getting the system up and running. And I wasn't able to actually spend the time to precinct, it was, it affected twenty one and twenty two. And so what we did is we backed into it and we used twenty one and twenty two and we added an O two sub precinct onto that. To make sure that those voters got the GID on their ballot. So, um, that, that was one of them, and the other one that we found was a voter called in and said that he believes that he had the wrong representative on his ballot. In research, we found that it was, uh, possibly a precincting error from twenty one. So it's, they voted that way in twenty two, or twenty two, they voted that way in twenty four, and it was just, it was way too late to address, it was, it was days before the election when it, when it came to our attention. So, um, it basically affected around six hundred and some voters. Um, and they should actually, what, what they're proposing now, and we're not sure if the state map or the state records are right or the county records are right. Um, but Steve and I and Nikki are going to continue to work on and verify that and get that fixed by the end of the year. Um. Our turnout, I, I think was great, because this election was seventy one point oh eight percent turnout, our twenty two, we only had, um. Fifty four percent turnout, so the turnout was awesome, um, I just, I like these numbers because, um, we have forty seven thousand nine hundred and twenty seven active voters. Um, so we only improved, we improved our turnout as well as our, our, um, active voters went up by about ten thousand, so I, I was really proud of that, so. Uh, we're looking at about fifty one percent paper mail-in ballots, which really jumped this year, um. Other than the COVID year, of course, I can't, can't use that as, as a real comparison. And we did have, uh, two signature cures where, I get Kim, Kim and Fernley, the clerk and myself here, we didn't communicate, she did accept two signature cures. And I was not aware she had them, so. I learned about it yesterday, um, she said she had put them in the, the tote, the facilities picked up, well, those don't come back to our office, they go direct to our. Our warehousing, so we worked with the state yesterday to make sure that we could count those ballots. Um, and they worked with us very graciously and we got those counted, so we averted any, uh. People getting hurt by that, so that, that's something that we'll work on in our communication, so I think that's, uh, most of. The, the big top things that happened that we dealt with throughout the election, but overall, I think it went real well. So I'm happy to answer any questions or if you heard anything that you need me to address, I'd be happy to do so at this time.
Any questions?
No, I just want to say thank you for your diligence and the hard work from, from your staff.
They were awesome.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I, I agree completely, you guys did a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, I had a couple of questions, you just gave us the summary and I find that more interesting than this, so. Is there a way you can get some of those numbers, so you could just?
Actually broke, which I stopped, is that I am going to do a full election breakdown for you, um, for the costs, and I wanted to give you some numbers on what was rejected. Um, the costs and things like that, so yes, I will, I, and. In the, hopefully by the next time, because I got these yesterday, so I was like, ah, um, but yes, in, in the coming meetings, I will give you a full breakdown and give you a lot more information on that. Uh, because the cost of this election, it was very pricey, so I do want you to understand where those costs come from and things like that as well, which I didn't have time to put together for the campus.
And you mentioned that you were getting something from the PPP, the primary and the general, was, was that along the party line or was that just in our certain area?
No idea, I didn't even open them, because when I, if they come in rejected, we don't even open them. So I, I can check that and make, and kind of look at that when I'm looking at, because I was focusing on. I guess USPS not properly handing ballots, because I think that's a huge issue, because we've, in the past, when I first started. Um, and in twenty three, we were getting general ballots from twenty two in January. So I don't know where they've been, they look brand new, um, they thought it might be for, for, because they're post office boxes that no one are picking up and that's not the case. So I have probably about a hundred and fifty written complaints, um, that I am working on and turning in and tracking down. Um, because if they're, if we're going to continue to use mail ballots and people are depending on that mail, they really need to take this seriously.
Yeah, I was just curious whether or not I was a region or party or.
It's all. They, and like I said, they thought it was just PO boxes on late now, and we've, I, one of the reports was from Smith Valley. Um, one of them was from Fernley and I have two or three on the ballots itself from the Dayton area.
Anything for them. Again, thank you, I appreciate, uh, all of the machines being out in the field this time, I think everybody was happy that they could go down to the polls and vote. Not everybody was happy about. The mail-ins in the past and, uh, I know in Smith Valley, it's kind of a community activity, everybody goes down there and visits in line and, uh, so I was very happy to see that. Do appreciate the better turnout, although seventy percent still not a hundred percent, I'm not quite sure why people don't. Take this more seriously and get out and vote. Uh, but thank you very much for the report and, um. I think there's seventy five pages here, I went through it, um, on, online. Uh, who we told it would be ready last night, so sat down and looked at it, uh, I kind of agree with Commissioner Keller. Um, it's nice to have this as backup, but it's also good to have just a quick, uh, executive summary on. How many came out to vote and some of the final scores on, on voting tabs, so. Uh, also, we have. Yep, we have, Commissioner Jacobson has a comment, so go ahead.
I just want to thank you, Chair, I just want to thank, uh, Ms. Limburg and all of her staff, um. It's not so much even probably the hours, but the stress that goes along with it and, uh. Your effort and diligence is greatly appreciated, ma'am.
Thank you.
So thank the staff, they did a fantastic job, thank you much. All right. I need a motion to approve the canvas. Oh, public comments. Seeing none, then I will look for a motion on, uh, five A to approve canvas vote from November fifth, twenty twenty four, for general election, per the NRS.
Move to approve to canvas the vote from the November fifth, twenty twenty four, general election per NRS two ninety three point three eight seven.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hendrickson and a second by Commissioner Henderson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, I have a vote of five zero on that. And we're going to go down to six, uh, we're going to go to six B for possible action, presentation, discussion, recommendations on next steps for resolving the affluent disposal issues in the Dayton area. Miss Burkettah.
Chairman Hockaday, Commissioners, uh, David Burkettah for the record. Um, so. We believe that we have a temporary solution, a short-term solution for this, uh, for affluent disposal. Um, you know, we'd like support the board on this, um, but what it, and what it has to deal with is, uh, possibly opening up, uh, building permits. So, um. One of the, as we know, you know, we're, we're approaching our affluent disposal capacity. We have existing commitments out there, um, you know, commitments that we've made through legal agreements, uh, commitments that we've made through existing bu- building permits. Um, so adding those in, we're very close to our current capacity, but one of the elements in our discharge permit, um, in our effluents regulated by NDEP. One of the elements is to use the, um, affluent for dust control. Um, you know, our biggest concern with affluent disposal, I've said in the past, is during the non-irrigation season, most of that usage historically has always been during the, you know, the summertime type use, fall. Um, we have the biggest challenges, you know, January, February, March, and there's, there's not been a huge use for, uh, reclaimed water for, uh. Dust control. But, um, one of the things that we looked at, and I, and I have to give credit to Andrew and to Josh, because they were really the thinking outside the box on this. And that is, you know, we cannot use, uh, effluent for dust control when there's freezing conditions, and so it's always historically been, you don't use it during those periods of the time, but. You know, Lion County has other, uh, property that's associated with Stagecoach, Silver Springs, that has, um, you know, much more favorable environment during freezing type conditions. And then the other component of that is there are times where even there are still freezing conditions, where the ground's frozen. And so one of the solutions that, um. They came up with is taking our effluent and hauling it to our other wastewater treatment facility and, um, putting it in the effluent storage basin. So, um, you know, our, our idea behind that, one is regulatory, um, so. You know, we, we had a conversation, a late conversation yesterday with NDEP to see if they would be on board and supporting this. And, uh, we talked with the Assistant Bureau Chief and some of their permitting department. And they couldn't give us, uh, well, they, they gave us an answer and that, that, that they were supportive of this concept, um, what steps we would have to go through still have to be determined. Um, they said that, uh, in the best case scenario, within a couple of weeks, we could do a short-term permit to, uh, implement that process. Um, in the worst case scenario, we'd have to do a major modification to our effluent permit. Um, that would take three to six months, uh, we'd have to go through a public review process. They couldn't give us a clear answer on that yesterday, but both of those are steps that, you know, I think that we could go through. Now, we wouldn't see those flows this year, um, you know, because it takes time, if we were able to open up the billing permits. Um, it would take time for them build houses, you know, another three to six months, we have capacity for our existing ones that we've already committed to. So we would make it through this winter, this would give us a chance to, you know, deal with, uh, finding more permanent solutions, you know, over the next year, and I think everyone's on board with supporting that, so I think. Uh, this concept, um, is something that, you know, is dual from the utility standpoint. To help, um, open up at least billing permits and get things moving along until we can find a more permanent solution on this. So, um. One of the things that'll have to happen is, if the board supports this, what I would do is I would work with NDEP. In determining what that process is, so if that process is a major modification, I start working on that, that process is a minor modification, uh, permitting, you know, temporary permitting, I'll start working on that process. Um, you know, everything that we do with NDEP requires engineering support, you know, our asset, the developed community, help out through some of that through their engineering services. Um, the other thing that we will need to do is. Um, we'll have to, uh, write and get approved, what's called a reclaimed water effluent management plan that's site-specific for, um, effluent disposal, for dust control. Um, there are some guidelines that the state has are called WTS standards. Um, I'll need an engineer that was willing to stamp that, go through that process, and then once they write it to those standards, we would approve it, and then the NDEP has to approve it. That's probably about, I'm guessing, maybe a month-long process. Um, but I think that's a relatively straightforward process that, you know, we can go through, um, to get the proper permitting in place. Um, that permitting would be for Lion County use, so, um, in our discharge permit, what it says is that we write the site-specific, uh, reclaimed water master plan. Um, it would be for Lion County personnel to provide this service, the dust control service on Lion County property. Um, we highly encourage the, uh, uh, development community to go through the same process on their end, and the EP still requires them also to go through the permitting process, it's how it's written in our discharge permit. Uh, but I'm sure we will get support on that. So I think, um, at this point, you know, our, our, my recommendation is that, you know, we would go through this process, um, with the idea that the board could, could lift the pause on building permits. Um, so that we can, you know, continue to work on this problem while still processing building permits. Another recommendation is that, uh, so the recommendation is that the board lift the pause to allow new connections. Um, a recommendation that the board allows staff, um, to issue conditional will serves on a form that's approved by the District Attorney's Office. Um, will serves are, are letters that I write during the final map process, um, that is, there's some commitment, so I'd need some help with the DA's office writing basically like a conditional, uh, a permit. But, um, allow me to issue these will serves on a form approved by the District Attorney's Office. Um, and then lastly, after we have this discussion, just one item here, and, and I think there were some discussions that the Chair, uh. He have Glenn Martell, who's with the Nevada Builders Association, after this, this, uh, five to ten minutes to speak on half of the developers.
Yes, I just want to make one point of clarification, um, when David said that we were encouraging the developers to, um, apply for that discharge permit. That would be so that they could use effluent for dust control on their projects as well, if they want to, we could give them that. That water is part of that, it'll help. Get rid of some of that. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Question, Commissioner Keller.
So we were talking about, uh, possibly moving it to other sites and stuff like that, but how much is that temporarily going to increase in?
So, well, of course, this, we're hoping that there's going to be a more permanent solution in the meantime, but what that would equate to is, um, you know, we just had an analysis, on average, historically, we've done around two hundred homes, two hundred good building permits. Um, we looked at November through November of this year and our number was just under a hundred and sixty. At a hundred and seventy five thousand gallons per day, um, you know, that, it, it equates to about twenty five thousand gallons per day. So the theory behind this is that, you know, we'd have to haul a truck, a water truck, um, during, you know, conditions that exist, you know, that would be roughly seven trucks, seven trucks a day that would have to go through this process. So we have talked to the roads department, um, you know, we do have support if needed, and again, this isn't, and I just want to be clear, there, you know, we, it would be some fallback onto the counties. Um, but it's, it's when there is not, um, ground or roads, the dust control could be applied. So with the help from the development community and them getting permitting and using some of the reclaimed water, and then with our roads department, you know, there's. I can't tell you how many days, but there's, you know, a handful of days or weeks every year that would there basically be frozen ground that would either be between here, Stagecoach or Silver Springs that were there in where it would have. So it wouldn't be like an annual commitment, it would be during those implement times, uh, where the weather just wouldn't allow it.
So, so you're only looking for, uh, possibly a year of permits, if we don't get something solved by then, then we're going to come back to the same problem, right?
Um, well, yeah, in theory, but I, I do believe that, you know, we've got. Everybody working on more longer-term solutions and, you know, that's the goal behind it, and that's why I would consider this in my mind a short-term solution.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that, I, I just, we already had a solution and apparently that's not working, so. I, you know, this is just another solution that can end up with problems too, so I'm, I'm not, you know, bent at all on that. But what does concern me is that people start stacking, uh, their permits, and so, uh, so, so like if I had a, uh. Acre of land in the water district and I was waiting till this was solved to do it and I'm not quite ready. Then when you, when this comes through, all the development community puts in for all the permits. And then, then the people that, that are residents here now might need it, and I, and I only say that because I ran the same problem when they did the moratorium in, in, uh.
Yeah, I, we, we've talked about that, Andrew has, uh, some comments.
Now, we're not, well, we're going to get to this next item, but we're not proposing any limits on. On permits, so, so it's not going to create, create a limit there.
Okay, well, I didn't want them to come in and say, we, we need.
Okay, well, I didn't want them to come in and say, we, we need a thousand permits tomorrow and and we're all, we're not really ready. And then it's up to us to fulfill those thousand permits. So.
No, I, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't quite work that way when, when you submit a permit application and we would work with the building department on.
Okay, well, tentative maps and those things too, so.
Understand, but yeah, we're not uh, we're not concerned about putting uh.
I just don't want the, the public to be.
I, yeah, I understand your point.
The reason I ran into it and just so the public knows is that it took a year and a half to get a mother-in-law's quarters built up on in uh, Douglas. And it was uh, something they needed for their elderly parent at the time, and it took a year and a half to just get the permit because of the moratorium there. So I don't want that run into any problems like that.
Yeah, they've got a, a different system on a growth management ordinance that they got.
So there's no problems. I'm, I'm good.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. Well, I think staffer, thinking outside the box, as you said, to come up with a solution. Because one thing we do not want to do is send a message that Lyon County is closed for business. We worked really hard to send a message that we're open for business. And so I certainly appreciate the work you did. Only comment I had though. Yeah, I'm just going to say this for the record, is I know that efforts are still ongoing to get to the root of the real problem, which is the insufficiency of the ribs. As long as that continues for a final solution and for the county to be made whole on that, then I'm, I'm good with this. So thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy with this solution. I think it saves a lot of heartache and a lot of money. Um, always appreciate that.
Uh, Commissioner Jacobson.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I just want to uh, thank uh, Mr. Burkettah and his crew and county staff, Andrew. Um. I know that there's a lot of people in the audience on Zoom uh, that lost a lot of sleep. Hopefully the workers weren't affected too much. Um, but uh, I do know that our county staff probably lost just as much, if not more, sleep than anyone. And so I'm grateful for this solution and hopefully we can all work together to get back rolling. Um, before the uh, temporary stoppage. Thank you again, Mr. Burkettah.
And when you're talking about moving the affluent over to Silver Springs, uh, what's the capacity look like there?
So the good news with that is that that capacity, the treatment plan's been very steady at about thirty, thirty-three percent of the total capacity. So we have room. We haven't seen the growth. And so in the next couple of years, we don't anticipate any problems.
Okay. Anything further from commissioners? And then we'll move on to public comment.
Actually, Mr. Chair, um, if, it, it, I mean, it's up to the chair, but um, the Builders Alliance has requested to talk for like five to ten minutes on this subject, so um, if it's okay with the chair.
It's, it's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, good morning, Chair, Chair, uh, Board. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Uh, I also, and we also, everybody in the room, uh, we've had, uh, you know, a lot of good meetings. We've had forty or fifty people in our meetings, as you do here on the Zoom call as well, trying to find answers and creative ways to keep the county moving forward, in particular Dayton Valley. We also like to thank Andrew and David and the team on the Lyon County side for getting creative on this. And as requested, we are more than happy to support the permitting site at N D E P to expand the developers' permits on their areas to help simplify that process and, and keep it local and, and not have to have so many trucks on the road there. That's easy to do. As well as any technical assistance that we could provide. If we need to provide some extra assistance on the stamping as requested or uh, any of our staff, our teams here have a lot of people that have decades of experience in Dayton Valley. So more than happy to do anything we can do. Um, as this process moves forward, we also clearly understand that there's a short-term solution that David talked about. But we've talked about maybe the midterm solution through next year, as David talked about. But also more importantly, that long-term solution was mentioned today, right? That how does Lyon County stay in a good position for the next ten, twenty years? So we're committed to that process, happy to work with Andrew and the team also to work all those things in parallel over the next year. So hopefully in a, in three months, six months, whatever it is, we're able to continue to bring you back good news and that we have a plan to keep all of the life, safety, health issues and the economic future of the Dayton Valley uh, moving in the right direction. So thank you for your time and thank you, Andrew and David, for their time and, and being creative. And we look forward to doing anything we can do. Thank you.
Anything further?
Just public comment.
Yep, just public comment. And I know we got a lot of it, uh, last meeting. Okay. Then uh, I believe we have a um, a motion to make. Uh, recommendations were made, uh, lift restrictions on permits and uh, will serves will continue. So does anybody want to take a stab at uh, making a motion on six B?
I'll take a stab.
Okay. Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I move that we direct staff to continue working on the temporary solution as presented this morning. And also to continue working for a long-term solution to the affluent disposal problem in the Dayton area. Um, second after you.
If I may make a suggestion, um, we're also um, recommending that the board lift the pause to allow for new connections. And to recommend that the board allow staff to issue conditional will serves on a form approved by the district attorney.
Wouldn't that be on six A and not six B?
Not, no. So I've got a whole other.
Whole other thing here.
That looks more like six A to me.
Give me one second.
The last part of six A is lifting restrictions and uh, that's, yeah, so.
Talking with the district attorney, it can go either way.
Okay, we'll do it on six A. Perfect. Where the motion stands.
In a second.
Yep.
So that motion stands uh, Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. That one stands five zero. And now we're going to go to six A for possible action. Presentation, discussion, recommendations on the process of complaining, applications, site improvement permits and building permits in the Dayton Utility Service Area for the existing affluent disposal issues in the Dayton area. Options include, but are not limited to continuing a temporary pause in applications and permits with review at regular intervals. Accepting planning applications with the understanding that connections and occupancy may be delayed. Granting site improvement permits, understanding that acceptance of improvements may be delayed based on sewer capacity issues in the Dayton area. Issuing partial building permits or permits up to utility approval with the understanding that a certificate of occupancy may be, may not be issued. And county manager.
Andrew asking Lyon County Manager for the record. Um, yeah, so um, with this um, short-term solution that that uh, we've come up with. Um, staff feels that uh, feels comfortable that we could lift the temporary pause on billing permits. Um, the, we can recommend that the board lift the pause on site improvement permits, but require developers to review and sign our disclosure agreement as approved by the district attorney's office. And recommend that the board allow staff to review and sign final maps, but require developers to review and sign our disclosure agreement as approved by the district attorney's office. So pretty short presentation on this. I, I, we had something else prepared, but it's not necessary now. So um, that's, that's what we're recommending. So that along with uh, um, recommending that the board lift the pause uh, to allow for new connections uh, and to recommend that the board allow staff to issue conditional will serves on a form approved by the district.
Any questions? Commissioner Hendricks, anything?
Nope.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. No, just again, good work, you know, and I, well, and I want to say this now. Because I want to thank everybody in this room. Because I know you all work together. This could have been very adversarial. And it's not. So thank you.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Nope, thank you, I'm uh, Commissioner um, Hockaday, but uh, no, nothing. Thank you, uh, Andrew. Good job.
Thank you. Any public input?
Good morning. Susan Pansky with Project One for the record. I just want to say thank you for hearing us, everyone. Thank you, staff. Thank you to the commissioners. We're very happy with the temporary solution and excited to get back to work. So thank you.
Right, thank you. Anybody else? You know, uh, phone lines have been burned up between uh, county manager and myself and other commissioners, so it, it, we have not taken the issue lightly. We understand where everything's was a problem for the entire county. So uh, I do appreciate your input. I know we had uh, a lot of good input last meeting, so hopefully we can move on and, and uh, make sure that everything is going to work properly in the future. And we won't have this issue to deal with again. So at that point, we will look for a motion for six A. I believe um, we can get through that one.
I move that we lift the temporary pause and allow utilities to issue conditional will serves approved by the district attorney.
Okay. Going to have more on that, but.
Um, so staff is recommending, that's a few more things on that, that, um, if, if you're open to it. Um, so one would be to lift the um, pause and issue conditional will serves on a form approved by the district attorney's office. One recommendation that we have is to lift the pause to allow for new connections. Um, one recommendation is that we lift the temporary pause on building permits. One is that we recommend that the board lift the pause on site improvement permits, but require developers to sign to review and sign a disclosure agreement approved by the district attorney's office. And then finally, um, the final recommendation is that the board allow staff to review and sign final maps, but require developers to review and sign our disclosure agreement as approved by the district attorney.
Um, okay, then lift the pause and allow utilities to issue condition, conditional will serve uh, approved by the district attorney and connections. Does that cover everything?
New, new connections.
New connections.
And then the building.
And then the building permits.
And the final.
And the final maps. Did I get it all?
And the, and the.
And the sign. You should have just given me a piece of paper. As presented by the county manager.
Second.
It's a mouthful. Just what he said. Yeah, so we have a, a motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. So we've completed five A, six A, six B. And we'll move on to uh, seven commissioner comments. Commissioner Hendricks.
Um, I, I just would like to thank the development community for your input, and I really do hope that uh, staff does take their offer of help, because with a permanent solution, the more engineers that get together in a room and hammer things out, the quicker we're going to get a good solution.
Well, I don't know if I agree. It's a good thing getting a bunch of engineers in the same room, but it's kind of like getting a bunch of lawyers in the same room. Yeah, but no, I, I do want to thank you guys. You know, this is what Lyon County should be. Development community and county staff working together to improve Lyon County and to keep our economy growing. So again, thank you all very, thank the staff, and thank you guys very much. I really, really appreciate it.
Just good, but fellow commissioners, so.
Commissioner Jacobson.
I agree with what has been said, Chair Hockaday, and then uh, I just want to thank all our veterans and military personnel around the world and, and uh, here in the States uh, for their service.
Thank you. And uh, I agree. So at this point, uh, we're going to move on to the final public participation. No action to be taken on any item until this property agenda is anticipated. The public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation or ask to state your name for the record, and will be limited to three minutes. Do we have any final public participation today? Seeing nothing on Zoom and nobody jumping up in the room here, I will say that at this point, this meeting is adjourned.